I'm getting on.
Meeting will come to order, please. Roll call.
Mr. Frye, President.
Here.
Mr. Bova, Vice President.
Here.
Mrs. Lasich.
Here.
Mr. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Tanser.
Here.
Now, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here. Thanks for coming and showing an interest. It's nice. Principals report, usually not. Everybody's pointing fingers at everybody else. Ah! Ladies first.
Okay. Tracy's not here tonight, so I'm going to cover her portion. As far as building management staff, grade level staff meetings have been utilized to discuss the scheduling for next year and what we've decided. Classes in grades five and six will remain at 90 minutes each, and seven and eight will remain at 60 minutes each. What we have found from the increase in the time is that teachers have had a lot more opportunity to start to transition to the Common Core standards, and we have found that to be beneficial. There's a long, in your update that you received, there's a lot of information on the upcoming park assessments that will start next year. I'm not going to read the details of that right now, but what I will tell you is the bottom line is, in our content meetings, in our grade level meetings, we are working very hard with our teachers to integrate these question types and the content-rich types of questions, a lot of reading and writing into all of the different contents across the board. As far as the Teaching and Learning Committee, which Tracy is responsible for leading, they are going to meet again on the 20th to discuss professional development for all staff in grades K through eight to learn about guided reading, resources needed for successful implementation of guided reading, observation and assessment, dynamic grouping of readers, creating sets of leveled books, selecting and introducing books, teaching for strategies, and management of the process. So those are all agenda items for the meeting that's going to occur on the 20th. If you have any questions, please email her directly. As far as school safety, we would like to thank Mr. Jordan and the Board of Education. The middle school now has 34 cameras to help maintain the safety of the building, and word is spreading fast with the kids. They've noticed them and ask us about it all the time, so we make sure that they know that we are watching at all times. As far as stakeholder communication, we are continuing to do the newsletter approximately either weekly or every other, about every 10 days. So if there's anything that you know of that's going on either in the Canfield community or with our recent graduates or alumni that you would like to showcase, please email Mr. Jordan, who will then forward it to me, and I can help get that in the newsletter. As far as student life, for the first time ever, CVMS had three state champions in wrestling. Our youth wrestling team is doing an amazing job. Matt Cardallo, David Crawford, Dominic Cooper, all placed first in their weight classes. Also qualifying, Reben Katre, Eric El Hayek, Tyler Stein, Nick Crawford, Tariq Malouf, Alex Max. So we were proud of them. Jonathan Gant and Drew Scialzo made it to the state competition for math counts, which was an extremely difficult task to overcome, and they did a great job. Lindsay Davis, she is one of our students in the eighth grade. She was in the Vindicator Spelling Bee this last weekend and placed third, which was outstanding, and we're going to feature her in this upcoming newsletter, so make sure you take a look at that. And that's it for CEDO.
Good, thank you.
Nice job.
Next.
Elementary schools will go next. Good evening, Board members, community members. Thank you all for coming tonight. We have quite a bit going on at the elementary schools. All the students at CH Campbell have recently just been benchmarked to see where they're currently at in reading, and we're adjusting some of our reading interventions to help accommodate their needs. So some students that may have improved may be coming out of interventions, students that may have just been identified may be going into them. We also have report cards coming out on April 4th, so those are about two weeks away. The end of the grading period's at the end of next week. Some of the big events that we've been having recently, we just had our annual Spring Festival. It was a huge success. We raised almost $6,000 through that, but we had 629 people in attendance there. 355 of them were children, the rest were parents that were there as well. It was an amazing experience. They had a lot of fun things for the kids to do there, and I know they had a great time. Our third grade phys ed show also happened and was also a big success. Mrs. Harren, our gym teacher, coordinates that effort, and she does an amazing job every single year. All of our students that went out and sold cookie dough to try and raise some funds for our school, they raised quite a bit. The students that sold enough cookie dough, though, are going to get to go on a limo lunch that's coming up next week. So normally, they would be going to the Golden Corral with their closing. They're moving to a coca pizza embordment. So they raise close to $20,000 every year through that sale, so this is a great way to reward those students for their hard work. Mr. Maroney and I have started our preschool visits and have been going around from one preschool to another to talk to them about our kindergarten offerings that we're going to have for next year, specifically all-day kindergarten, but also just to answer a lot of the questions that parents may have about kindergarten. As for some of them, this is their first time going through the schools, and it's a very, very big deal, and there are a lot of unanswered questions. So we are also going to have kindergarten registration coming up very soon at Hilltop. It's going to be April 1st, and at CH, it's going to be April 8th. And we just had Monday and today realignment meetings to talk about the potential realignment of our elementary buildings with our staff members to continue that communication as well. The Canfield Local Schools is participating in a community project that's being put on by the Canfield Rotary, looking to collect hearing aids that may be broken or no longer used to help donate them to a community in need. I believe we're looking at the small island nation of Dominica, so we're teaming up with the Canfield Rotary to do that. CH Campbell and the other schools are going to be an area where we'll collect those devices to be transported out. The next one is a big deal, and every year, we have the Handels Coins for Kids campaign, and every year, the parents of Canfield step up. The way that they reward the schools is the winning school that collects the most money per student that's in your school building wins a Handels ice cream party. We have one of our little kids here, and they haven't even found out yet, but CH Campbell raised more money in Mahone County per student than any other school. So we are going to have an ice cream party coming up here very, very soon.
When is that specifically?
When specifically? I believe we're targeting April 11th, but we have to confirm with Handels, so.
And the board's invited?
Should be, absolutely. Everyone's invited, so, absolutely. In addition to that, CH Campbell's staff has been working through our Alice training a little bit more. We're going to be rolling the Alice program out to our students very, very soon. And again, our Common Plan meetings, just like at the middle school, have been focused on guided reading, our new reading curriculum we're going to be looking at, and also, our teachers have been traveling to other schools, specifically, in this case, Aurora, to try and see them implementing guided reading in their schools, and they do a phenomenal job at it. And Marv touched on the cameras that went into the middle school and the high school as well. Those are coming to the elementary schools next, so we're going to be the next ones on their list. But thank you very much.
Travis is very efficient and covered the majority of things that I was talking about, crossing things off as he's talking. One thing that Hilltop is going to be involved with is pennies for students, working with the Leukemia Foundation to raise money for childhood illness, that we do have a student in our building who is in remission from leukemia, but we're going to partner with them to hopefully raise about $2,000 for leukemia research. Some other things coming up at Hilltop this month, March 27th is First Grade Grandparents' Day. That will be at 2:00 in the afternoon. Mr. Lowery mentioned the end of the grade period is Friday, the 28th. Also that evening, Friday, the 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock here at the middle school, we will have our PTO Family Fun Night. Again, we'd like to invite our PTO, our board members to that event. Kindergarten registration is coming up on Tuesday, April 1st. We have two PTO general meetings coming up. One is Thursday night, April 3rd at 7:00 PM. That will be in our school library. The next one will be Friday morning at 9:30. That meeting will take place in our cafeteria. On April 10th, our fourth graders are going to Powers Auditorium for the Young People's Concert. And then finally, on Friday, April 11th, we are having our Hilltop Fun in the Sunday. So again, PTO is welcome to come to those events also. Thank you for your time, Steve.
At the high school, we just completed our Ohio graduation test, and I'd like to thank Mr. Woolavon because he really organizes all of that, makes the adjustments in our schedules, handles all of the issues around the Ohio graduation test. No problems, everything really went smoothly, and again, I'd like to thank, like, for that. During that time, our ninth graders were given a program on drug education, and our SRO officer presented that to them down in the gymnasium while the 10th graders, sophomores, were being tested. We just completed passing out all of our registration materials for 9, 10, and 11. They're coming back in so that we can get some numbers and really start establishing and building our schedule for next school year. I'd like to report that we are going to add a zero period from 7:15 to 8:00 next year. Depends on the number of students who actually sign up for the class. There's two classes. One will be AP Psych, and that will run the entire school year, and the other's Government, which will be offered second semester only as a zero period class. Field testing will start for the end-of-course exams, the new park assessments, starting on the 31st for all of the schools. One of the issues that I'm sad to report is that we're not going to offer our summer physical education program. No one could step up to bat and help us out and offer the program this year, so I don't know how many years, but I know that program's going on for at least 20 years, and this will be the first year that it's not offered at Canfield. However, we are looking at some alternative ways to assist and help our students gain that physical education credit throughout the year. And I think Mr. Jordan will have more to say about that later. Okay? And we would also like to thank the board for a new security button down in the athletic entrance. Now, the building is secure. Well, it was always secured down there, but if you pressed a button, Mrs. Vince could actually see who's at the door now. Before, we just pressed a button, the door opened, and they were able to walk in, so it's been a big improvement, and we're happy to have that. So thank you.
Lot of activities going on in the high school this weekend. Our spring play, Nurse Reynolds, is the, she's the moderator who's putting this on. It's called Night of the Living Beauty Pageant, and it's going to be a great show, so if you're looking for a really fun night, it's really reasonable, go see that play. It's this weekend. Recently, our band and choir participated in the OMEA, which is a musical association through the state, and both band and choir were both rated superior, the highest rating they could get. Once again, another, you know, what makes Canfield special, a lot of reasons, but just so many different activities for kids. And we're just very proud of Mr. Kelly and his bands. I think there were two bands. They have two bands that participate. And the choir also, Mrs. Scourge did an outstanding job. Our robotics team, this, the next two weekends, they go to Cleveland this weekend, I think it's Thursday, it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and then they go to Pittsburgh the following weekend to participate. And talking to Mr. Crum today about that, they're very excited. The competition's really stepped up, and our kids are really working hard, and just what a great group of kids. Mr. Tulio mentioned OG Tiwi. Our winter seasons, sports seasons have, are winding, well, they're done, so we've got banquets to go to, and last night, I had the honor of attending the wrestling banquet, which also honored some of the middle school wrestlers, too. But Coach Conley had a gentleman named Russ Hellickson, who was the Ohio State coach. He's a legend in Ohio high school wrestling, who gave a fantastic speech to our young people about really things that didn't have anything to do with wrestling, but had a lot to do with commitment and dedication and character. And he was, he was outstanding. He's an Olympic wrestler. He's about my age, pretty old, goes way back there, but interesting. We have a young man, Richard Jenkins, Richie Jenkins, and the Ohio Educational Service Center Association congratulated him on being the Mahone County Franklin B. Walter All Scholar, All Scholastic Award winner. Richie's a fine young man. He's got many, many honors at the school. He'll get to go down to Columbus with his family for a banquet down there at the Double Tree in Columbus Worthington. Another activity at the high school, our art department. I don't know how many of you are familiar with our art department. We'll have an art show, which is traditional in May. If you've ever want to go see really great young artists, you've got to go to this show. That gymnasium is just packed with the wonderful work Canfield students. Well, to add to that, the Fine Arts Department would like to recognize a huge recent success for one of our students. We have a grade 11 young lady, Bonnie Anderson, who has received the National Scholastic Silver Medal at the 2013-14 Scholastic Arts Competition. She will be attending a ceremony Friday, June 6, 2014, at Carnegie Hall in New York City. That's just phenomenal, just absolutely phenomenal. And our art show, again, will be later in May. We'll tell you more about that in the next couple of months here. Our community, we have 20 young people in Mahone County who show leadership through community volunteerism. This is put on by the Town Crier, Akron Children's Hospital, Mahone Valley Parent Magazine, and Tribune Chronicle. They took like top 20 students in the county for service in all these categories. We have four of the top 20 from Canfield High School, so we're very proud of Ernie Barquette, Drew Bennett, Richie Jenkins, again, who we just talked about, and Michelle Whiteleather. They're outstanding young people, service to the community. And on kind of a, kind of a fun note, we had a young lady who graduated from Canfield High School in 2010, and her name was Angela Bausch. She goes to Ohio Northern University, and she will be representing Ohio Northern in the Miss Ohio Pageant. And we had the Town Crier come down and get in contact with her parents, and I spoke with her and her father. And Angela's a beautiful young lady. She's a Canfield grad, recent, and real proud of her. She could be Miss Ohio, and which would take her on to the possible, the next level of competition. Interestingly enough, she's a very quiet, unassuming young lady, wonderful character, totally out of context for her to be in a, in a, in a pageant like this. She did it on, kind of like a dare, because there was some scholarship money, and she shocked everybody, and she won. She said she shocked, her father said she was just shocked. But Angela Bausch, and if you look at the Town Crier, she's a beautiful young lady, but she's even more beautiful inside. She's just tremendous. Thank you.
We have minutes from the Third Board's 12-2014 Board Meeting. Are there any corrections? If not, and I have a motion to accept the minutes.
To a moment.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Being that, could you please call the board?
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes. And that brings us down to the Treasury. Oh, yeah. Can we excuse them? You guys may go, please.
Can we look at the financial report by fund? General fund, you'll see that current fund value is getting low. We finally started receiving our real estate tax advances this month, so next month, we'll see a much healthier balance there. Also, the Page Six, the federal grants, I will be applying for funds to bring those up, those balances up at the end of this week, so those should be better next month also.
I think there's an understanding that when we pass a levy, we get a check.
Who gets a check?
Well, supposedly, we get a check. I had a few phone calls about certain things, and people thought, well, don't they just give you the money right away? No, it kind of triples it in. We don't have it yet, so we don't get a check.
We probably won't get a settlement.
In case you were wondering, we got a check.
We probably won't get our settlement for the first half until maybe the end of April or the beginning of May.
There you go. That's when we might get a check.
The appropriations, right on target with the budget. We're at 67%. The year has passed, and that's exactly where we're at with the budgets. A few line items are up and down, but they balance each other out, so don't have any concerns there. Nothing to comment on the check payment register unless you have questions. And on the purchase order list, some principals commented tonight, but I wanted to reiterate that in keeping with the promise to the voters to upgrade security. See at the bottom of Page Eight, there's two purchase orders to Ashton Sound Communication for the middle school door entry, and then the high school athletic entrance. And then on the next page, Page Nine, halfway down, and then toward the bottom, the SOS Security Systems, you'll see three different purchase orders there for the camera systems at CH Hilltop and Middle School. So we are getting that taken care of, and I would assume maybe by the end of this month, Alex, that that stuff will be done?
I'm sorry?
By the end of this month, maybe that stuff will be done?
That's, that's a projection, yeah. The, the high school's complete, middle school's complete, other than the buzzer systems on the front door and handicap accessible entrance. They're working on those, started today. Those should be done by the end of the week, they're saying, again, depending upon weather, when they're talking about outside, but the interior. The middle school was our most problematic, just because of the additions and the type of walls and that sort of thing. Elementarys will be great, so hopefully by the end of the week, not in a month, yes.
Then the investment report. You'll notice there's a couple new, Fannie Mae's Federal National Mortgage Association at the bottom, and those rates are a little more attractive than the money market rates above, that are ranging from .02% to .1%, so starting to invest the new levy money that's coming in, trying to go over the rates. And you'll notice that one steps up, so as time goes on, the rate goes up, which is a nice feature. Any questions?
Any questions? I have a motion to accept the Treasury report.
So move.
I'm second.
Second.
Being no discussion, could you call the board first?
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes. That brings us down to student resolutions. Mr. Tanser?
Student Resolution 60-2014 through ADO 2014 and 84 2014 through 86 2014. Whereas the Canfield High School girls swim team was named AAC Champions, and Mallory Allen was named First Team All AAC in Swimming. Sarah Haven was named First Team All AAC in Swimming. Teresa Mickelay was named All AAC in Girls Swimming. Brianna O'Malley was named First Team All AAC in Girls Swimming. Olivia Williamson was named First Team All AAC in Girls Swimming. Whereas, boys swimming, Connor Brady was named First Team All AAC, state runner-up in both 200 Free Relay and 100 Fly, placed fifth in state in 400 Free Relay, seventh in state in 100 back, and was named NEAC Male Swimmer of the Meat in Boys Swimming. Drew Bennett was named First Team All AAC, state runner-up in 200 Free, placed fifth in state in 400 Free Relay, was state qualifier in both 200 and 500 Free in Boys Swimming. Michael DiDomenico was named First Team All AAC, state runner-up in 200 Free Relay, fifth in state 400 Free Relay in Boys Swimming. Daniel Bogan was named First Team All AAC, state runner-up in 200 Free Relay, fifth in state 400 Free Relay, state qualifier in both 50 Free and 100 Free in Boys Swimming. Kyle Anderson was named First Team All AAC and state qualifier in both 200 IM and 500 Free in Boys Swimming. Alec Giattano was named First All AAC in Boys Swimming. Adam Weiss was named First Team All AAC in Boys Swimming. And Ben Brookley was named All AAC in Boys Swimming. Whereas, the Canfield High School Boys Swim Team was named AAC Champs and NEAC Champs. And whereas, music education, Emily D'Amelio was selected to perform at the 2014 OMEA All State Band and earned Principal Chair. And Kyle Thompson was named, one of only 20 students in Ohio, selected from more than 1,000 applicants to perform with the 2014 Ohio Music Education Association All State Jazz Band. And whereas, girls bowling, Crystal Bates was named First Team All AAC in Girls Bowling, and Alina Murha was district qualifier in Girls Bowling. Whereas, girls basketball, the Canfield High School Girls Basketball Team was district runner-up, and Rachel Tenkey was named First Team All AAC in Girls Basketball. And whereas, boys bowling, the Canfield High School Boys Bowling Team was a state qualifier, and Andrew Letcher was named First Team All AAC in Boys Bowling, and Paul Harris was named First Team All AAC in Boys Bowling. And whereas, these accomplishments brought honor to themselves and their families for this, and for this school. Therefore, be resolved that all these people mentioned be commended for their outstanding accomplishments, and that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of the Canfield Board of Education, and that copies be presented to them. I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolutions as read.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Tanser, you're a natural.
Four years' experience.
There you go. All right, being that, could you call the board, please?
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes. That brings us down to public comments. Do you want to say something?
I would. Over the past several weeks, we've, we've gotten together, we've had a committee together of administrators in-house, and had much discussion with the board, and really appreciated conversation that has, that has transpired and taken place and true community engagement on restructuring or the possibility of redistricting our elementary schools. Want to thank all of the dialogue that took place, all of the members, all of the staff. We've had several meetings thus far. We feel that we definitely would like to take a look at this in, in the future, but right now, we feel that with the urgency of new assessments, with the addition of all-day kindergarten, with transportation improvements and upgrades, that we're going to have to make sure that we iron out to make sure it's appropriately offered to our, to our public and our kids, getting them to and from school safely. With, with additional OTES training on staff and curricular upgrades and changes in curriculum, we're looking at guided reading in our, in our elementary levels and all the way through our middle school. We just feel that the timing is, is not right right now. We, we appreciate the dialogue and appreciate the additional dialogue that's going to take place throughout the district as we move forward, but to make a move for the 14, 15 school year, we just feel that it's, it's not the appropriate time. We need additional time to get all the other issues ironed out, to make sure that there's not any interruption of instruction, and that's the last thing we want to have done, is to have any type of interruption of instruction for our, for our youngest of kids. So I just want to thank the board on that. And again, appreciate, appreciate the conversation that really has started. We feel that this is a direction we really need to invest more time into, because it's, it's definitely something that, that we feel is, is something for our school system to look at, but we want to do it right. We want to make sure that we educate our public, we educate our kids, and have our staff have additional influence, so that's, that's where we're at. And hopefully, by making this statement and decision, people realize that no decision was made, because we continue to hear that as we went through the process. If a decision had been made and a recommendation and proposal made to the board, it would have been handled much differently. Hopefully, our public understands that as, as an important decision as this is, we would never make a snap judgment without true conversation and true dialogue and, and community engagement along with board engagement and staff engagement. Those are pieces we don't take lightly, and hopefully, in the future, people will understand as we move forward and decisions that are made and recommendations that are made to the board, they're just not made by on a whim and on one person's recommendation. It's, it's a community decision, and we, we truly appreciate that dialogue that takes place, so I wanted to make that mention.
We just want to tell you, everybody's been heard. We heard everybody, and we told you that. We said you've all been heard, you've all been counted, and that's, that's the case. And if it's re-investigated again, the whole process will start, public meetings, meeting with the teachers, everything will be public again. We are very transparent. We are not ever, ever going to try to
We are not ever, ever going to try to sneak something in without parental involvement and staff involvement. This will never be done. So now you know that. So now you can talk if you want. You had all those speeches ready. You can still give them. Especially the lead-off guy. I'll be up.
No way, I'm first. Thank you for that. I really do appreciate what you just said immensely. I like the idea of thinking out of the box and being a top-10 school in 2017. I think you should have a committee of parents get together. There has been so much research done by a lot of people on what makes a top-10 school, and they have a lot to share, and I could sign up a lot of people for that committee.
And you may be called.
Exactly.
That is a volunteer.
I'd like to volunteer my friends. And I will say, my daughter is in fifth grade, and when I told her what was going to be happening perchance about reconfiguration, she was very sad about that. There is such a community, she went up to Hilltop, she had the opportunity to walk in every day, see her kindergarten teacher, get a hug from Mrs. Creed, her first-grade teacher, Mrs. Norduski appeared today. And it really meant a lot to my daughter to be a fourth-grade student at Hilltop. And she had a great experience with that. Now, the reason why I put my name up first is she's in fifth grade now, and she is in a classroom where we have, and I called you last week, thank you for calling me back, the leak. And the leak is back, in Mrs. Altura's classroom. And there is a concern she had, there was a student last week, we have a major leak in that classroom, where ash came down from the ceiling, went into a student's eye, and I know that this building is loaded with asbestos. I have concerns, obviously, I don't want my daughter to be in a learning environment that there is a leak. And so I wanted an update on that, and also, if somebody can investigate if there really are not doors on the stalls and restrooms in the middle school building, I'm not sure where that's coming from. That would be great, but again, there's also reports of a lot of interesting things that need upgraded in this building. So now, having my daughter in a fifth grade here, I'd like to see this building get what it needs to have. And again, I'm just really looking for an update on the leak. So, thank you.
I'll first address the asbestos thing. The building is not full of it, and in the area that we're talking about with your youngster, there is none, so be rest assured. There is none that you have any concern on this end of the building. So, yes, there was a leak, and there are probably many leaks throughout northeastern Ohio and throughout this area as we speak today. We feel that we're addressing those as they arise. Any concern about air quality, if you know of the events that had transpired in the middle school, like you said, you probably are aware that we had an issue that was even questionable in the eighth-grade wing. When we were first notified of that, we closed the area down, had investigated and brought certified members come in, the company come in, test air quality, addressed the leakage, test air quality before students were even put back in there. So, we think of staff and student safety first, no matter what we do. So, understand, if there's any concern of air quality, we're going to address it. Leakage, we're going to have additional leaks, I guarantee you that. Probably in every building that we go into, but we will address them as they arise. With the structure the age of it is today, and as diligent as we can possibly be, there will always have issues like that, but we will continue to address them as they occur. To redo the entire roof, that's not something that we can possibly look at when instruction is taking place. So, we will look at that possibly a more larger scale over the summertime, but to do it now, we can't do it. We're just hoping to patch and get through the remainder of the school year. So, we'll address them as they come, but there is no perfect science, especially with flat roofs. We're going to do the best we can with that.
I think my major concern, she came home twice with headaches, but she said there was a very strong cleaning smell, and I know, she cut, "Mom, they're working so hard, they are working so hard to get that leak stopped, and they have it cleaned up, and, you know, the buckets are every day are, you know, cleaned out," but there is a really strong smell in there. And I just was wondering...
Well, we can address a leak when there's inches of snow and ice to get to it. We even have, and God bless our custodians, they get up there and they shovel the roof so that we can have a company come in and address it. But that took some time, and Don Adams, again, top-notch, can't ask for a better person, he's up there chiseling the ice just to get to the leak, to where it's at. So, we're doing everything we can to do to get that stopped. But it's going to happen, it's going to happen. We're doing what we possibly can.
Anybody that's driven on the roads with the freezing and thawing, losing a car, all right, that's what's happening on the roofs. Is the freezing and thawing is making cracks in the roofs, and then water gets in and leaks, and finds someplace. You know, you could be 50 feet away from, I mean, the water's just running down somewhere, and all of a sudden, "Oh, they're a good place, we'll just drop in here." But that's right above is not where the leak could be. But that freezing and thawing has been so bad this year, anybody drove anywhere around knows that, and every building is going to have leaks. It's just, it just is. And that's because, that's because of, one, it's flat roofs, and, two, this winter has been awful for any kind of driving or roofs. Good for a roofer, not for roofs.
You know, roofing is one of the issues that the Facilities Committee got together and put that as a priority, but again, to handle that now would interrupt major instruction. We're trying to alleviate it. Not saying the instruction isn't important in that room.
It's just a small room, there's not, it's coming through the ceiling.
And what we've tried to do is even move that room into another area in the building so that it's not necessarily interrupted as such, but we're doing what we can there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Sheets?
Why question regarding when the next community forum is for the reconfiguration?
That's been answered.
Answered. And I would just like to say, at an elementary level, a better way to communicate, I know we have great communication, I appreciate that, but a better way would be paper in the envelope, or in the folders, because a large part of our community didn't even know that this was a possibility occurring.
You know, we used to do that, and then they found out that that didn't work, because a lot of the kids weren't bringing home the papers. Now, maybe yours would, and that would be good, and we can add that, but I'm just saying, that used to be the sole way of getting, and then people would always be saying, "What paper? I didn't get a paper. Where's the paper?" But that used to be the sole way until Mr. Gordon came and started to do the phone system, and, you know, the newsletter, and the emailing, all the different things, Twitter, and all the different things we do, you know, so I don't know, I mean, we can put that in there, we can try to put that in there, but I'm just saying, I don't know. I mean, we'll do that, just, I don't know how many different ways to try to get it out there besides going door-to-door and knocking, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I just think that community forum, a lot of people didn't know what that meant on the marquee either. They didn't know, unless you were driving by the school, or word-of-mouth, you still didn't know what that meant.
We try to invest a lot of time into using multiple avenues of informing folks, and the all calls have been very successful in trying to get information out to people.
No, I appreciate that.
And for the people that don't know, send us your emails, and be on the communication. We have 2,500 emails that go out to people on the communication. If they get their email into us, it'll be put on it, and that, they'll get emails with what's going on in the school. It just takes one call, if somebody's upset, tell them, "Call the school, give us your email, we'll give it to the Communication Committee, you'll be on it." Those emails flat out, there's 2,500 people on it now. We'd like to get, we'd like to get 8,000 people on it, that's everybody, over 8,000, but we don't have the emails. So, I mean, just ask them to call.
I just think that at elementary level, parents have been trained very well by teachers and staff to open those folders every day.
Well, it's, you put it in there, and then the kids sometimes...
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Doesn't make it, but I'm just saying, if that's a problem, we can do that, but if that's a problem, get their email in here to us. I mean, we are doing everything, we're trying to do to open communication up to the entire township and city and school district. We are trying to do everything we can, and still, we're just falling through the cracks. So, we're going to keep working at it, until hopefully, we get it right. Yes, I'm sorry.
Kevin Sheets?
Well, you sort of stole my thunder. That's what I was going to talk about, is the communication issue, that, you know, we, the all calls are fine, but, you know, having talked to a lot of parents in the course of the past couple of weeks, a vast majority, the majority of them had no idea that misalignment, realignment was even a possibility or in the works.
Well, can you get the word to them to get us their emails?
I will. As a matter of fact, I haven't gotten any emails, and I hope you have my email.
I just thought there's over 2,500 people that...
Is there a link that I can send them to on the website?
What you have to do, if you notify your building-level administrator, building principal, they will get them on the site.
Okay.
The next step?
Finding...
As long as, some of the issues that you might have with is spam, and some of that could, are firewall there that way, and we'll try to rectify that if you're not getting us no.
Next.
Steph Kelly? Hi, thank you. I guess, first of all, I'd like to commend you and say thank you for taking some time to rethink and focus on maybe some of the more imminent issues that we've got in front of us with curriculum and things of that nature. So, I think that there are a lot of people that are going to be very pleased to have a rational approach to that, so thank you. And I think, given that, I would like to still address what I was going to talk about anyway, which is, I've got copies to pass out to everyone on the board. If this comes up again, I have a sample of how one school district actually approached their configuration, consideration, and there are a number of school districts that did something. And simply, it's the city of Oswego, New York, they had some other mitigating issues that they were trying to, Mr. Jordan, there's a copy for you as well. But the premise of what I was just trying to illustrate by passing this out is simply that they went to a neutral third party, they brought in Syracuse University, and asked Syracuse University to go out and act as a think tank in some aspect to gather research, and I apologize for the fine print, I was trying to get it done quickly, so. But, you know, they just, they consolidated and assimilated a large volume of research, looked at live data from their population and forecasting and things of that nature, synthesized it, and came up with a number of recommendations to the board and the superintendent that they could then take a look at and discern with the community about what worked best for them. And so, I would just like to propose that if something like this comes up in the future, that we take a look at bringing in a partner like YSU or Kent State to help with that process and to help bring an additional level of information and resource to a very important concept like reconfiguring your schools.
Okay. Thank you. Good idea.
Amy Herman?
Thank you for pushing the pause button. That's really all I have to say now, that I think it's doing a little more due diligence as warranted. I just, I was talking to Mr. Maroney, felt that we were kind of, well, parties involved were looking through rose-colored glasses if they felt that this could be implemented for the 14, 15 school year, and I'm just happy to hear that you are taking a little more time to put your ducks in a row.
Thank you. That's it? Okay, thank you very much. If you'd like to stay, that's fine, and if you'd like to go home and take a nap before you go to bed, it's also fine.
May I have one more moment? I'm sorry.
She wants to go to the restroom. Restroom?
No, thank you.
Go ahead.
I just, I was actually, they asked me to get back to it, and I forgot to. The bathroom stall in the middle school, that is something that I've heard from my middle schoolers as well, that there are certain bathroom stalls that are, don't have doors to them. And I was wondering if our Facilities Committee could perhaps, I don't know, do a survey to see if...
That is on the list. That is on the list of improvement...
I heard it's for boys, like, well, it's for girls, so...
I can only speak of the one men's restroom that I know in the middle school that does not, and it's something that is on the list of things...
I was going to say, I use the one right here, and I know I actually closed that to make sure that a 15-year-old...
By the home ec room, going up the stairs, there are no doors on that.
Okay, so one specific one.
One specific one that I'm aware of. But it is ours.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay. You go.
How are you? Well, I'm... So, it's been rough two years, but...
I will. Take care. Okay, that brings us down to new business personnel.
Sure. I'd like to recommend approval of licensed substitutes at exhibit number one. Phyllis Brown. I'm at... Delahonte, Delahoney. Jody Gerdic and Abby Taylor. Again, 1A, 1B, 1C, and 1D. Your exhibits.
All right. Based on the recommendation of the superintendent, do I hear a motion to approve licensed substitutes?
All right. Any discussion? Being done, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Mrs. Lysich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes. I'd like to approve classified substitutes at your exhibit number two. Mary Lynn Orvath. Based on... I'm sorry, two more? We'll clump those together. Approve the substitute bus drivers, exhibit number three. Richard Calona. David Justine. Stefan Kovacs. Jim Patterson. Again, that's your number three section.
Based on the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to approve classified substitutes?
So moved.
Have a second?
All right.
Discussion? Please, could you call the roll?
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Mrs. Lysich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes. Recommend approval of extracurricular per your enclosed list, exhibit number four. It's a volunteer baseball coach, Ken Turbeck.
Based on the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to approve a non-licensed extracurricular volunteer baseball coach?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? I hope is he as good a coach as he was player.
That's not always as easy.
I know that. Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Mrs. Lysich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes. I'd like to recommend the approval of the out-of-state overnight field trips at your exhibit number five. Canfield softball team to Ashland, Ohio, April 11 and 12. In order to participate in Wendy's Spring Classic, providing transportation and lodging are covered by an outside organization. That's 5A. 5B would be Jets Club Robotics Team to California, PA, March 27th. In order to participate in a robotics competition, providing transportation is covered by an outside organization.
Based on the superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion to approve out-of-state overnight field trips for the softball team and the robotics team.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Question?
Yes?
Did we approve last month their trip? You just mentioned earlier that they're going to Cleveland one week, and then did we already approve the Cleveland trip?
We did. Okay, thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Being done, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Mrs. Lysich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes. Recommend approval of fund-to-fund transfer HB 264 note payment. And here's your resolution there, 82-2014, that's your exhibit number six.
Based on the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion for approval of Resolution 82-2014?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Bring me up to date on that one.
That was...
Recommend the approval fund-to-fund transfer HB 264 note payment. And here's a resolution there, 82-2014, that's your exhibit number six.
Based on the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion for approval of resolution 82-2014?
So moved. Have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Bring me up to date on that bond.
That was a middle school project, this is almost $900,000. This is our very last payment on that.
We don't have any outstanding bonds beyond that.
No, we're going to have the new bus one.
We will, yeah.
Coming up, but this, you know, this is it.
This is it.
Pays off all our debt.
Good.
All right. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mrs. Lysich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Like to recommend approval rate resolution 83-2014, that's your exhibit number seven.
Right. Based on the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to approve rate resolution 83-2014? So moved. Have a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion? Being done, could you?
I'm just going to comment.
Okay, go ahead.
The only change is the new 5.9 mil additional lobby, no other changes.
Okay, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mrs. Lysich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend the acceptance of the donation as per your enclosed list at your exhibit number eight.
Based on the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to accept the donations for the March 2014 board meeting?
So moved.
Have a second?
Sir?
Discussion?
You just got back. Just want to highlight we, what a, what a speech and debate team that we have and the support there, their donation of $2,472 for lodging at the state tournament, outstanding had that support for youngsters.
And that many youngsters.
And that many youngsters. You're right.
How many kids roughly? Around 30 qualified?
Yeah, I think there was 30.
30 qualified.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mrs. Lysich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes. Please, it's time to the superintendent's report.
I have several tonight, trying not to make it too limited, but I definitely would like to update you on a few items. First off, I'd like to update you on the property that we have on Shields Road. There have been a couple of issues that arose here over the last couple of weeks that we had to address. First, the roof, again, another roofing issue, we're having to address that and we received several quotes, and we're comfortable with the firm that we're, we have now in place to do that as soon as weather permits, so that is needing to be addressed. The well just, the well pump just went this week and turned over within a day, get a new pump in there to make sure that the, that the house has water. That was taken care of this week. And also, we, we actually now have a lease agreement, a three-year lease for farming of the property. We never had a lease for that property, we now do, and we just signed a lease agreement with a gentleman from Canfield and comfortable that they're going to take care of the property along with, with the farm. Diesel tank at the bus garage.
On that, how many acres do we have there?
We have, farming wise, we have just over 22 acres that is going to be farmed, plus an additional couple for the, for the house.
And we currently rent that?
We do rent the house, that's correct. That's correct. 850 Patty a month, we rent that house for, I'd say 50. Diesel tank, we have an issue with our underground diesel tank, no problem with the groundwater, with any, a problem with the soil, no leakage, but it is taking on water and it is going to have to be replaced. So, we're in the process of purchasing a new tank to replace the one that is there now. We now have an 8,000 gallon tank. We, talking with, with the gentleman out back, that I should say across the street, our mechanics and transportation supervisor, a 10,000 gallon tank is what we really need. One benefit of a 10,000 gallon tank, obviously, less filling. Second is, most of the companies want to deliver a minimum of 10,000 gallons. By us not having a 10,000 gallon tank, we have a less opportunity to get the best price because we have less companies that's willing to bring out 8,000 gallons. So, by having a 10,000 gallon tank, we feel that we're going to be able to negotiate a better price for that. And the tank currently is about 22 years old. We've gotten our wear, they usually last, those tanks that we currently have around 20 years, so we're right about there now. And by having a new tank in there, really get us several years of solid usage out of it. So, we're in the process of purchasing a new tank and then getting a firm to put that in for us. This is going to be a four to six-week process because we can't just go down to Home Depot and pick up a tank, so this is something that's going to be some time, but the gentlemen who work with us on a daily basis are very comfortable with this.
Do we want to take out the old one?
We have to take out the old.
And do we have to put a new one back in that same hole?
You got it. We're going to have to make sure that we have, allow EPA on-site when we do all of this and make sure that everything is taken care of appropriately and by the book, and we will make sure that that's done.
Question, down the road, hypothetically, we might be talking about other sources for propulsion like propane natural gas.
Why did I think you were going to bring that up?
Well, I didn't know you, but my question is, I'm not sure how that stores it, but if it's underground while we're digging, is there, you know, some reason to put a tank in while we're doing that process?
To convert over?
Well, let's hypothetically say we use an additional source, we're digging one out while you have all the equipment here. If we're going to give consideration to that, is it an underground storage or an above-ground storage?
What we're looking at putting in, in the ground again?
No, we're talking about.
Natural gas? All right. I, I'm going to lay this out for you and hopefully this will answer your question. We spent a lot of time over the last week investing, a lot of conversation with our mechanics and transportation supervisor, including myself, and we are not comfortable with going to compress natural gas. There are many reasons. There, here's a study for you that our guys went to and listened to, and actually we contacted other districts that have gone to it. There's a lot of pitfalls here, and one of them, obviously, you look at cost. For a new bus, it's double the cost to go natural gas at this point, just to purchase it.
You're talking specifically compressed natural gas.
You got it, you got it. Now, we're, now we're in the topic of underdeveloped heavy equipment. We really don't have a lot of studies on bus propulsion for this, so it's really underdeveloped right now. And a large concern is a station, where we would fill, how we would fill, the length of that filling process, also training that would have to take place not only with our mechanics, but also the drivers. So, there's, there's a lot of different areas here and I could go over with you, but after you read this, or after you skim it, if you have any questions afterwards, be happy to talk more as we move forward. But our mechanics, transportation supervisor, we sat down together with them and they are definitely not in favor of going this direction. We talked to Lakeview, we talked to Lakeview schools, if you know that Lakeview schools are actually going back to diesel and they have this for their buses.
Would you lump, for example, propane in with this or is it separate?
The one thing that I would say on that, which, and I thought that, and a lot of the same concerns are here, I'm thinking about kids' safety now, and the vision of what happened on 2/24 at the Giant Eagle, it was been about six or seven months now. If there's any, any problem with a gas in a fuel line or spark or anything, the equipment that that is installed on will blow up in flames like that. The driver alone of that vehicle had a hard time getting off of their truck when he noticed that it was, we had, they had an issue. To unload 40-plus youngsters off of a bus when that driver recognizes an issue, I hold my breath, and I, and I would have a hard time recommending that for our kids to be on. So, that, that's a big, that's a big concern. Also, when you look at it, the mileage, obviously, we don't get very good miles on a, on a bus, but it's half a mileage that these buses would get. It would be cheaper to fill, but half the mileage, so you have to offset the pros and cons there. So, again, we're confident that, and it's a good time to invest in some research on it and looking into, if we're going to invest a great deal of dollars on a new tank, do we, do we need to start taking a look at compressed natural gas? That's why we spend some time looking into this.
You know, I heard that Austinita is doing this, but just as an FYI, they're also doing it in conjunction with the township, the police, the fire, so that to build that expensive station, they have the city involvement as well.
Quite extensive. You're right.
If I'm correct, I think that you don't store liquid natural gas, you compress it and put it into the vehicle where it's held.
Correct.
You're not going to store enough compressed natural gas to do any good.
Not with the fleet we have. I mean, if we're, if we're talking about filling a, filling a gallon up or filling a tank up for a car, that's, that's different than when you have a fleet of 30 on the road.
Could we ever recoup our costs if we tried?
We just, we truly don't feel that we would, it would take forever for that to happen. And then, we would have to start purchasing new buses because the longevity just isn't there either. So.
You did a good job of research.
You know, I really, I have to commend the, the mechanics also, those guys really helped out with that too, so. We sent them to an in-service and they brought back some good information. Another topic that I'd like to mention, we talked about the camera update, we don't need to beat that horse anymore, but it is an important issue along with the buzzer system. Gym credit. Mr. Tulio mentioned about the concern about summertime and we can research that some more, but right now, we just don't have somebody for the position. We are going to investigate and we're going to look at this very heavily. We have an opportunity, if we decide as an administration and recommending you folks as a board, to offer co-curricular activities that have physical movement required for them, to give them gym credit, for instance. If they participate in a sport, if they march in marching band, if they are a cheerleader, if, there are, there are specific requirements, but if they have physical activity during their co-curricular activity, we can give them gym credit.
We used to do that.
And I've had it in a previous district and it was, it was good in the sense where then it freed up our youngsters to take additional electives. If we want to offer more electives and writing courses and other things, not saying that the, that the physical movement and wellness isn't important, but our kids get a lot of wellness in those extracurricular activities in itself, so we're going to, we're going to really look at that. And that, just be aware, that might be on our docket here in the near future.
Do you know exactly where that stands? Because when Nancy and I were at the state legislative meet, they, there is a, let's say a bill with some very questionable language, quite frankly, where they're talking about credit for athletic clubs, and it wasn't very, is there anything on the books of the state of Ohio right now about that?
On what you can, what?
Giving credit for, or a waiver for. And there's a difference between giving credit for and giving a waiver on.
Right.
I think Struthers does it now.
You, there is, it's specific, and it's specific on what you can offer it for. Yes, so, not to take away from, from the club because it's wonderful, but the Jets Club Robotics, that is not, that is not a co-curricular activity that we can offer that phys ed course for, or credit for. But, like I said, football, baseball, basketball, physical activity, marching band.
Cheerleading.
Cheerleading, flagline, those are, again, golf, swimming.
They got a walk.
Yep, bowling, so those are physical activities.
Just so happens, I, I've been doing a little bit of research after that meeting and I have a frequently asked questions about the physical education graduation requirements from the ODE, which I'd be happy to pass along to everybody if this is going to be an active topic.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
And we designed a summer phys ed class way back in the 80s because we felt that more could be accomplished in the summer than could ever be accomplished during, during the regular school system, where kids could go out and learn how to play tennis and play tennis, could play softball, they could use the track, and all the facilities were available and they didn't have to worry about taking showers and getting all sweaty and going back into a classroom, which to me, it's ridiculous.
We had kids from all over the area. It wasn't just Canfield kids, we had kids from everywhere that would come to this because, you know, just because of it, you could get out and you could do those different things.
Right, made so much sense.
One other topic I'd like to mention about, a little handout here, hopefully you can read my writing, competitive balance. This is on the docket for all public parochial school systems to vote on, and we are going to be looking at this and be able to have a vote, and it's interesting, I won't mention another school.
Does there anything happen to do with?
I'm not going to say, I'm not going to say anything. I'm not going to say, not going to say anything. Competitive balance, hopefully, again, I can do justice to this so that you can see it. What, and this is looking at implementation in 2016.
Is this, are you talking about our league?
No, this is OHSAA across the state. Yes, I'm sorry if I didn't explain it. Each sport has a value, and that sports factors at the bottom of the page. And you might question, well, why does football have two and why does soccer have six? Because the way the, the committee for OHSAA looked at this, they said, if someone were to come for open enrollment or for other reasons, as we know in private schools and parochial schools, for football, that athlete, excuse me, student athlete affects that sport differently than it would for basketball, soccer, volleyball. Because, let's just, for instance, say, a wide receiver would affect the game differently than a starting center in football. You play with five in football, you get one student athlete that comes in, will definitely affect the game differently than 11 on the field at a time. So, that's why those factors are the way they are. Or a goalie in soccer, or in hockey, or somewhere like that, but obviously hockey's on the air because it's sanctioned. All right, anyways, digress. Single homes, high school, public district, if you look at the top, you take your EMIS count, that's your total amount of students that you have, whether you're talking boys or girls, not everybody together. So, now we're talking about volleyball, so we're talking about girls. So, let's say that that district, very similar to ours, has 400 girls walking their hallways in the high school, 9 through 12. They take ninth grade team, JV team, varsity team, and the total amount of girls participating on a squad, 45, usually it's 15 a squad. If it's your home district, there does not count, there's no factor there at all, so there's no addition to it. If it's open enrollment before 7th grade, most kids come open enrollment before 7th grade, but some do come afterwards in some districts, there's a factor of one, so you have to multiply all of those youngsters who came before 7th grade open enrollment and multiply it by one. So, that adds 10 to the amount of students now counted.
If you have 10 students.
You got it. If five students now are open enrolled after 7th grade, let's say that somebody open enrolls in 8th grade, prior to the senior, prior to the high school, so they wouldn't have to sit out, but they come in 8th grade. That factor now, volleyball, you look at the bottom five, let's say they have five students, factor of five, 25 students now, they're considered as 25 students instead of five. So, if you add those up, now their divisional placement is 435 instead of the EMIS count
Well theoretically, we would be 400, 'cause we don't have any open, we would have no open enrollment.
Correct.
Is that good? That makes us more competitive?
That would benefit us, that's correct, that's correct.
More than those five, six, six, 285-pound linemen that just happened to come.
Maybe not.
To a certain school.
Okay.
That live in the Toledo, Akron, Youngstown area and go to Cleveland, I mean, I just don't understand, you know? But the education's much better right now.
Doesn't happen, all right.
By the way, the sports factor's two for footballs are different.
You think it should be higher?
Yes.
I agree.
Yes.
All right, so, the middle section is for multiple high schools in that public district. For instance, let's say Akron City, we have Akron City, we have Bookdell, we have Elit, we have a lot of city schools there. So, this is for those guys. EMIS count, again, 400, if it's football, I put down 80, 'cause you have ninth, JV, and varsity. Again, district resident, nothing. Same city, but they pick the high school, let's say that they live on the east side, but they choose a high school on the west side, that's times one. Open enrollment after 7th grade, again, there's your sports factor, 20, add those columns up, 440. Okay. Now what we're all waiting for, non-public high school.
Glendale could hit 500 class.
Glendale could hit seven. We won't talk about other schools. Uh, non, non, non-public high school. Sorry. EMIS count 200. 60 students participating in baseball, 20, 40, 60. Parochial schools get to pick their feeder middle school. So, again, I don't like to talk about other school systems, or districts, or.
You're just citing an example.
But I'm just gonna give you an example. Let's say that Ursulon picks St. Christine's as their feeder school.
Is that a middle school?
That is a K plus.
K grade.
Let's say they pick St. Christine's, that factor is zero. If it's another middle school, let's say they pull from St.
Charles.
It's times one.
Ursulon better not pull from St. Charles.
If they pull outside.
Same.
If they pull outside of Youngstown or the parish, all right, so again, if you look at the top, if it's a Youngstown resident, or if it's a feeder school, there's no factor. If it's another middle school, in their parish, it's times one. If it's outside of Y-Town and their parish, it's a sports factor. So let's say that a youngster decides to go from South Range, 'cause they would never wanna leave us, but if they wanna leave another district that's outside of Youngstown, and outside of their parish, they get the sports factor there.
Or Miss Team might swell.
Now, when you say parish, are you referring to the?
Forty-some kids a year.
The specific parish, or a diocese?
That specific feeder.
Pair, okay.
No, we have 42 kids under varsity football.
Yeah, but that was it.
That's what I'm saying, they, they will swell.
So.
All of a sudden.
There's, there's a lot of simulations going on out there right now, obviously, we're not gonna be affected, because we don't have open enrollment, and we don't have all those other factors that we need to think about. Other districts are definitely looking at this.
Are there any rules being discussed about open recruitment? Hypothetically.
We, we had a meeting, a few of us had a meeting with Dr. Ross, he was good enough to come up, he's the executive director of OHSAA. And his statement was, this will definitely find out where kids are coming from. And one of the superintendents in the room, who's here tonight, said, it's not that we are worried about where they're coming from, we're worried about how they're getting. That's the concern, so, we expressed our thoughts. It's, it's a step, am I saying it's in a step in the right direction? I think it is, if it, does it solve, nothing in this proposal has any conversation about separation of public and parochial tournaments or playoffs, none, it's not in this.
Who's voting on this?
High school principals get to vote for their school systems.
So if there's.
Majority rules.
Majority rules.
Majority rules.
This similar proposal went down last year by 20 votes.
Out of?
Out of over 800.
Whole state. It's getting closer.
It's getting closer.
Slowly.
The difference to this, the difference to this has the open enrollment piece in it. Last piece had only the sports factor, only parochial influence, now, the, the commissioner feels that with this language, and adding the open enrollment piece, they will have more non-public high school votes behind it. Because now, they, those folks are feeling that it's not just them being looked at, but it's all districts that gain enrollment from other communities.
This could be a private school as well, as long as it's non-public.
If they are an OHSAA sanctioned district, and they accept to be a part of that, yes, it's open. Hopefully.
Your excitement for that example is overwhelming.
Yeah, overwhelming, all right. Last topic, and if those of you that are here would like a copy, I've got a few extra. Indoor batting and hitting barn, bat, batting and hitting, pitching and hitting facility. I have a little design here, I definitely wanna mention that private owners, private donations, in lieu of contributions, labor, these, this group has already brought in over $126,000, ready to get this started, amazing. There are some forms here, if you'd like to participate and be a donor, they have that here for you as well, so if anyone would like to take a look at that. Groundbreaking, as soon as we can put a shovel on the ground, that'll go in more than three inches. And, and make sure that foundation and everything is done correctly. Yeah, there, there you go. Let me sort it.
It's on your picture, Rick.
Thanks, thanks a lot. So, again, I, I can't mention enough, and you see the name there, large donor, definitely came for the Sinefani Foundation, and that's why the, the naming rights were given there. So we're, we're anxiously awaiting for groundbreaking, and again, no tax dollars, all privately funded, another example of the support that we have in our community. Sorry to take so long, but wanted to update you.
Just as a tie-in, I'd like to say that the, the breakfast for the Canfield Chamber Breakfast coming up, the James and Coralie Sinefani Foundation will be honored for their work in the community, and especially in the schools.
It's April 4th.
Yes.
And, and the, the prime speaker, let's say, for that meeting will be Mr. Crum, talking about the robotics team and how technology affects the student today. So, we will be well represented among the Canfield businesses that day.
I need a motion to go into executive session to consider the employment of a public employee.
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Dean Knutson, could you call the roll?
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mrs. Lysich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
I missed your, I missed your orders.